6:30, so I guess we shall get rolling. So, uh, welcome to everyone. I will reiterate our vision and mission for the district and call the meeting to order and we'll be off and running. It should be fairly, uh, well, uh, established by now, but I'll keep reading it so it commits this to our memory. "Vision of the Milton School District is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And the mission of our district to support that vision is the school district of Milton in partnership with the community prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all." And on that note, I will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 27th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Rich, are you aware of any changes to our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second. Thank you. Dave's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our agenda as it is. Questions on it? I hear none. All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. We have an agenda. First on the agenda is the minutes from the previous board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting outside November 13th, 2020.
I'll second that. Thank you. That was Rick's motion seconded by Dave to approve the previous meeting minutes. Are there any questions on those? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And the vouchers follow?
I will move to approve general checking account vouchers, totally $187,562.76 as presented.
I'll second that. Well, the enthusiasm from the right-hand side of the board. John's motion was seconded by Dave to approve the checking account vouchers. Questions on those? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And I thank you for that. Comment had no one signed up to talk to us, so we will roll past it. And Rich's up. A is red hot highlights from some of our administrative group.
Yeah, we'll have our principals and directors come to the mic and share things that are happening across their schools and departments. And I'm going to share some information about our current weather process.
I think John and I are first because Kerry set up the computer for the tall people, so here we are.
Please adjust when you're done.
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, in the buildings and grounds world, it's a bit of a transition period for our staff right now. We're transitioning from our, uh, from our park season and our ground season to, uh, you know, that of salt and snow and all that fun stuff that goes with it. I would like to mention that, uh, your parks technically close November 1st, so we have everything really buttoned up for the year. And, uh, now, like I mentioned before, we transitioned to a snow and ice season. And, uh, we also are now in the thick of, uh, capital project planning for next summer as well. It's amazing how the, the cycle just sneaks right back up on us. So, uh, other than that, it's business as usual in, uh, in B and D.
Just a couple more updates for Northside. Uh, we have our kids back in the building today, which is super exciting. I think they missed us over the nine days of fall break, but the energy enthusiasm, the reconnecting is certainly probable. Uh, student council elections happened recently before we reconnected last time, so 10 Northside's finest ran campaigns, uh, were elected by their classmates as well as 10 alternates. Um, they've met recently with their advisor to kind of connect, establish roles. Mr. Donovan's going to be joining, I think, in a couple of weeks to connect and share some leadership tips with our Northsiders, but they'll be working on their philanthropic effort for this month and they'll be working on the first main tasks of the year. I want to highlight our parent teacher conference attendance this year. So as you know, we have student-led conferences at Northside. We had well over 98% of our families attend, which we were super excited about. Kids sharing their hopes and goals for the year, sharing artifacts of their learning, but was a really exceptional event. And wanted to thank friends of Northside for all their efforts for conference meals as well as book bears to kind of coincide, uh, again with that parent teacher conference event. Uh, lastly, I wanted to shine a spotlight on this Wisconsin board results that were recently made public. Uh, it was a banner year for Northside as we hit that high watermark achievement and growth, and we are really excited to see improvements in English language arts and reading, which is something that was really big focus for us. But our team's efforts, our students and staff and families, and the work looking at the item analysis and digging data from previous year, uh, certainly, um, showed that the results this year, so we're proud of our staff and students.
While the next speakers are coming up, uh, Principal Line has shared that I'll be visiting with the leadership group at Northside in a couple of weeks. It's actually in a couple of days. Looking forward to it.
Um, I'm going to give an update for teaching and learning, just, uh, voice projection is effective. Yeah, so, um, in, in the world of teaching and learning, uh, they're in the beginning... yeah. They're in the beginning process of looking at math curriculums, um, and will be piloting after the new year to determine next steps, um, for a math curriculum or adoption. Highlights from my world of student services, so we are launching our first social emotional screener with NextPath. Um, this was previously Panorama last year. We're going with somebody new this year. Uh, our student services team and Jamie Harris, who is one of the creators of NextPath, uh, did a lot of, um, analyzing questions and looking at areas that we wanted to continue to target, just like we did last year. Um, came up with less questions for both the connectingness and the SCL skills survey. Um, we went through a process of, um, some analyzing of certain data points, and then we brought that to the administrative team and went and got some more feedback, um, with our student services department. So, um, we landed in a nice spot. We're excited to launch our first survey, and that's going to go out sometime, um, in December. We'll close it before winter break hits in the, towards the end of December. Um, and information just went out about that to all of our, uh, families and caregivers with questions, or with the, uh, questions right there in the link for them to look at too. So, a little bit less in-depth than in Panorama, but still will give us the same information which we're excited about.
All right. So, after high school, uh, two days, we started, uh, it's the first day of the second trimester, so, uh, it was like the first day of school for many students. New schedules, and the students start new courses. It was an exciting, uh, restart for many students. Also, a line of this, that we have started our winter sports, so the second, third of the year, uh, so winter sports are all well underway now. Uh, I am pleased to announce that the Red Hawk Robotics team that has been, was really started last year with Mr. Rob Thomas, uh, competed in Platteville at the Vex Robots sponsored Wisco Bots, EWA Platteville, 32 teams there. To many people's surprise, including some of our students, uh, one of our teams took second place. And so they were ecstatic, as he was putting it lightly, uh, as they are learning what these competitions are like and they are learning what is involved in it. They're working very hard, uh, and they were in there early this morning working on their bots because there's a competition next Monday as well. Uh, and so it is really fun. It is an eclectic, awesome group of kids, and we're really excited for them. So they were very excited. We had four teams actually competing there, uh, and one of them, uh, took second place. Uh, we are working, uh, I was speaking with the curriculum committee, but I had a lot of teams that are working on new courses, so in the upcoming meeting, we'll be bringing the new courses, uh, at Milton High School. So that means we're also in the process of developing the schedule for next year. Uh, and so we will be meeting with students in December and then into January, uh, about the process for selecting their courses for next year. Uh, December 6th, uh, that's next week, uh, we'll be having a first meeting. This is actually a new meeting that we're, uh, having for, we're trying to get as many of our senior class students and parents, uh, on December 6th, uh, to, uh, the PAC. We are going to be talking about, uh, how to fill out scholarship forms. And so really trying to focus with our, uh, our students, our seniors about how to apply for scholarships, what good scholarship application looks like, uh, and, uh, how to be successful at that. And then also, uh, on financial aid, uh, this is big news across the country, but the FAFSA has changed. It's the most radical change that's undergone, uh, it's, I quote, "ever." And so there's a lot of new information on how to fill out, so we'll be working. We have folks from here, we'll be working, coming to work with our parents on what that means for all the FAFSA and opportunities to help as many students as possible, uh, find post-secondary education.
Good evening, everyone. We've had two school-wide assemblies since we were last here. That seems crazy to me that we've had two events since that, uh, our last report out. Our school-wide assemblies are in the last Monday of the month, and our agenda is pretty similar each month, so we recognize our SCL Students of the Month. We recognize student groups both school-based and community-based. Um, we have a shared slideshow that students and families can contribute to. Today was pets, and as you can imagine, there were many contributions, so our slideshow is 93 slides of pets across the middle school building. And then we always have a competition that we use the random generator for student groups to be able to participate. So, a lot of energy today because the competition was tug-of-war, and that's always a fan favorite at a middle school. Um, our student council is working on a project this week. They have an anti-bullying campaign, and all of the activities and communication is student-led. So, um, Crystal Schmidt is our advisor who oversees that, but all of the work comes right from the students, and their, their first effort wanted to be toward anti-bullying messages and spreading some awareness about the impacts of people's words. A week before break, Officer Schneider spoke to all of our students through their social studies classes. Uh, the chief had to fill in a little bit when he got pulled away, but, um, some common things like using the P3 tip line, vaping, other concerns in the community, and just an opportunity to have another positive connection between Officer Schneider and our students. So that was good for our kids to put names and faces together. And then finally, I think at the last meeting, I shared out that our project lead-the-way units were kicking off in our science department. So, uh, right now, our seventh graders in their design and modeling are working on designing a challenge for an ankle or a, AKA brace. They had to figure out, make sure that they had that correctly. And then our great architecture was planning, is planning residential spaces, so they are reading architectural plans. And then, what we could probably all use some experience with right now is being able to pick materials within a, a set budget. So, they're, uh, having some real-world application in their project lead-the-way exposure. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Uh, reporting out for our four 4K3 elementary, uh, schools. Um, first and foremost, we have an upcoming PD day, continuing to make plans, um, for our second year of implementation with our Wonders curriculum, which is our literacy curriculum, so working on that. We have winter programs coming up, so staff, students, and families also preparing for that. Uh, community outreach events or projects, much like, uh, you might have seen in our Red Hawk review. Milton West did the Macy Parade, their own version, donating food, uh, to the Milton Area Youth Center. That was amazing. And then, most importantly, as you all experienced yourself, uh, changing over to that winter gear at the elementary school. It's a full-time job, and we're looking forward to months of it. Game on. That's it.
The second part of the superintendent update is, is, uh, information on our current weather. Again, as we are hitting the, the winter season with, with ice and snow and cold, uh, we have few weeks back sent out the letter to parents that's found in board docs and just a few highlights from that, uh, as we have, uh, potential, uh, weather cancellations or road, uh, hazardous road conditions in the winter. We monitor both national and local weather services and local road conditions, have conversations with, uh, neighboring school districts with Go Right Way, uh, our bus company, around the conditions of the roads, as we're making a decision about whether to cancel or, um, or have a early, uh, release of school because weather is coming or a late start to school if there's bad weather in the line. Um, we make sure that parents are aware of that, even if we have school. Our goal always is to have school if possible, but we want to make sure the conditions are safe for our students and, and staff to get to school and, and to get home. Uh, we're, we're clear with parents that if they feel that the road conditions aren't safe for their child, but we have school, that they have the, the ability to keep their child home, uh, for the day with an excused absence, uh, if they don't feel that the roads are safe, uh, for their child. In that letter, it shares, uh, the different ways that we share that information out, and we utilize, uh, both local radio and TV stations, but also, uh, our district's website and, and social media posts. Um, if it's not a snow or road conditions, but it's a cold, uh, conditions, we again monitor if there's a wind chill advisory or a wind chill warning. Typically, the National Weather Service will issue a wind chill warning, uh, when there's sustained 30 below, uh, degree wind chills. And if there is a, a wind chill warning, then we likely would cancel or, uh, get out of school early or start late, uh, depending on when that starts and ends. Um, and typically, if school is closed for the day, uh, we cancel all before and after school activities, including, um, before and after school programs and 4K classes. And then, uh, we track our required instructional minutes, uh, if we have closes. When we start the year, we have, um, a window of extra minutes, uh, for instructional minutes for our students. Um, because there is some leeway there, in our first two weather cancellations, we don't make up that time or go to virtual learning, they're more traditional snow days. If we have more than two cancellations, uh, days that are missed because of weather throughout the year, then we have to make a decision on if we're going to either offer virtual instruction, add it to the calendar, or, or if we still have some little room for the state-required instructional minutes. If we do add a date to the calendar, we typically would either do that on the day after that, between then and the, and the end of the school year, where we have a scheduled day off, whether it's a holiday, holiday break, uh, or spring break, or add additional time at the end of the school year. Uh, we haven't had a significant number of weather cancellations the last few years, but every winter, uh, has a little bit, has a little difference to. Any questions or comments from board members on that topic?
I have a point that I think needs clarifying, Rich, because I get asked occasionally, if we dismiss early, uh, for a weather event, does that automatically cancel all of the after-school activities?
It typically does, yes. And I say typically just because, hey, there may be, we may be taking part in a state tournament event that isn't canceled, and, uh, we would then see if, is it safe for our team to go take part in that in a, in a regional or a state tournament event? Our, our first priority in situations like that are always to make sure that, uh, we're providing a safe atmosphere for our students and staff. And there, but there may be a rare occasion in a situation like that where we may have an event, but the general rule is that if we release early or if we cancel for the day, that all after-school activities and events are, are canceled or postponed to another day.
Rich, in case, and fortunately, this doesn't happen very often, but if, if we do have more than two snow days, um, is, I feel like having virtual instruction should be our last choice rather than a choice. Um, a lot, a lot of kids don't have a parent at home, and these kind of ad hoc situations, maybe with a grandparent or someone else, and so having some assistance with virtual instruction is probably difficult for a lot of families. I, and while I'm not a staff person, I imagine it's hard to have a Plan B curriculum in my back pocket every day for four months in a row, in case tomorrow's a snow day, in case tomorrow's a snow day. Um, and I know you had mentioned that, a decision would be made between virtual or just simply making up the date, but, but I think it would make sense more often than not, if we get to that point, to just simply make up the day.
Yeah, and a lot of it does depend on the situation. Um, where we may pivot to virtual, I know a few years ago, we had a situation where there was maybe, you know, four or five days in a row that were, uh, cold days, where it was a bit colder and it stayed that way for a significant amount of time. In a situation like that, where it's, the roads aren't unsafe, we could have staff members come in to work, uh, and provide virtual instruction, but, but it wouldn't, but we wouldn't have students waiting at bus stops and things like that. In general, students learn more on a day where they're in school rather than out of school. Uh, but, but they learn more if we offer virtual instruction and if we don't offer any instruction at all. So we weigh, you know, different options we have. Um, we did make some changes to what, what our virtual days look like after our first professional development day this fall. We got some really positive feedback from families about those changes that we made. Uh, in general, a lot of it was around, especially for our younger learners, making it less dependent on having a parent there with them. But it does require some prep work, so it depends on, if there's some lead time coming up to that, cancel later on.
Thanks. All right. Any other questions for Rich? All right. Very good. Thank you, Rich. Uh, we'll roll on, new business. Uh, A is the superintendent evaluation timeline, and I was not prepped on this, I'm guessing you're, and Chris, all right, let me do that. Chris has got this one. Well, Mr. Dukenendorf, it is all yours.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, this agenda item is a follow-up to the Human Resources Committee, Human Resource Committee's report regarding the discussion of superintendent devaluation form and process during November 13th board meeting. The purpose of this attached timeline in board docs is to let the Board of Education know that Human Resources Committee Chair, Mr. Mullin, will be sharing out information and an evaluation form for board members to complete soon. Please note it is important to complete this evaluation on or before December 6th, and if any board member has any questions, please reach out to Mr. Mullin.
Yes, question. So, on the timeline, it says that you were compiling, or HR's compiled data, 27 to 28?
Yep.
And that the chairs send, so will receive evals and then that compiled data?
That is correct.
On the 29th?
That is correct, or sooner. So, uh, right now, HR has been working on compiling all the data from the direct reports to be able to share with the board members to help with that information as you go through the year evaluation superintendent.
So then the second share of the, the second compilation of data is then adding in the board members with?
I have the compiled data right now. I'm going to share it with all the board along with, like, um, eval for you to fill out. But we'll all send that back to HR. They'll put that all together, plus all together.
And who has access to these? Where, where does this information go? I understand we have our HR chair. Where, how many folks within HR have the accessibility?
Right now, it's just Chris Watson and the Human Resources Department. I don't even have access to that. So it's just Chris Watson and Mr. Mullin at this time.
Rich, the clar, clar, what's going to happen? The process next? We're going to see the compiled data, and then we're going to do the eval?
They'll get the compiled data and the eval at the same time. So you'll see the data, fill out the eval, then it'll go back to Chris. She'll put that all back together, all the board responses, and we'll meet an executive session, uh, to discuss that.
And I guess, I have no more concern about seeing the compiled data as well as filling out the eval. Is that, or is that meant to be that way?
It's meant to, uh, assist you to fill out eval and, you know, say there are questions that maybe you feel like you're not even going to answer, or, so it's an option.
And so that data stays just with Chris?
That's correct.
That's it, doesn't go to yourself or it seems at that lower level?
That's correct.
And when it comes back compiled as, compiled, so there's no, uh, identity, uh, availability, I guess?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the intention. Thank you.
Any other questions? I can help answer.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. B on new business. I will invite Mr. Billhorn to the podium. We are going to discuss and possibly act on 2324 Milton High School extended field trip requests.
All right. So we do have a few more, uh, requests that came up, come to me since I was here just a few weeks ago, but it was Discover Democracy and some from our athletic department. All those dates are listed there, from wrestling through baseball and softball.
The softball one, that is the entire program, not just varsity? Where baseball is listed as varsity?
I believe it is varsity only as well. Looks like it says 14 students.
Yeah. I'll move to, for the 2023, it says 34, but 24 Milton High School extended field trip request as presented?
I'll second that. All right. Tracy's motion is seconded by Dave to approve our extended field trip requests that have been submitted. Questions on any of those? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Mr. Billhorn.
Thank you.
That clearly passes. Uh, C is spring school board election. I don't know exactly who's doing this. I can give folks a little bit of an overview. Um, the document provided here kind of summarizes for folks. We have seven board members. Uh, each of us serves a three-year term, so we're on a three-year rotation, which necessitates that three folks are up in a particular year, and then two the following year, and two the year after that. This is the year that there are three seats up. They would be Jennifer's seat, mine, and Dave's. Uh, so we are the three, uh, incumbents that, uh, those seats are the ones that are, uh, up for election in April. Uh, there's a, just high level for folks listening, there's a, there's a, uh, process to go through to get yourself on the ballot. Uh, Carly has provided us and would provide anyone that wants, um, a packet that, uh, has all of the necessary paperwork in it, uh, for your candidacy, and it, it explains, uh, some of the steps that you have to go through. There's a deadline for filing that, and help me Carly, early January typically.
January 2nd.
2nd. So folks can get that packet anytime, and, uh, that needs to be turned in by the 2nd of January, and provided you have completed all the necessary tasks or sort of checked all the boxes, if you will, um, that would put you on the ballot for the spring election. Um, if there are more than twice as many candidates as seats, in other words, more than six, that would trigger a primary, uh, in February. If there are not more than six candidates, uh, we would just have a general election in April, first Tuesday in April. So that's, um, kind of in a, in a nutshell, and I already had talked about, it's, it's a three-year term. We would, uh, encourage and, and enthusiastically seek anyone interested, uh, to, uh, to file, to, to run for the school board. I would personally offer, if anyone has, uh, questions or things you don't understand, I would be happy to share, uh, with folks what I, what I know. Uh, I certainly don't know everything, but have, uh, run a couple of times and have been on the board for a little while, and, and could actually help folks understand what the job entails, um, what the tasks are that we have to do, um, et cetera. So, would, uh, eager, eagerly encourage folks to, uh, to join us. I guess for lack of a better way to say it.
Carly, do you have anything on the logistics of that to add to Joe's overview?
I think Joe covered it pretty well. Everything.
We don't bite, so please come join us. All right. Questions on any of that? All right. That was the it for new, or, I'm sorry, that completed new business miscellaneous. A is our staffing report.
Make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
I'll second.
That is Rick's motion seconded by Tracy to approve our staffing report. Questions on it? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Staffing report is approved. Gifts and donations are included in board docs for you.
I would move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude. Second.
Thank you. Dave's motion is seconded by John to approve the gifts and donations to our district with our gratitude. Questions? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Meeting dates are next. Mr. Donovan?
A couple of things coming up. Uh, in December, we only have one, uh, regular board meeting. Said that will be on Monday, December 11th, uh, regular time, 6:30 here in the PDC. Again, that's Monday, December 11th. It's our only regularly scheduled board, scheduled board meeting for December. Uh, we have a Transportation and Safety Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 29th. That's at 3:00 PM in the first floor conference room. Transportation and Safety Committee, uh, this Wednesday at 3:00 PM. We have a Finance Committee meeting, uh, a week from today, on Monday, December 4th, at noon in the first floor conference room. That's a Finance Committee, December 4th at noon. Uh, we're looking at a couple of different possible dates in January for our Policy Committee meeting. Uh, the Policy Committee are Rick, Tracy, and John. Carly had reached out with some dates on, on January 4th, is a Thursday, or January 10th. Uh, Rick had said that he's available on January 4th, anytime after 1:00. Tracy, you said January 1? Tracy, who said January 10th works best for you, at a 5:30 meeting?
I could do it, I think, or I could do it as well. If we do it evening?
After 5:30, right at 5:30?
At 5:30, I can usually make it 5:30, yeah. That works.
Is 5:30 on either Thursday the 4th or Wednesday the 10th?
The 4th works for me. 4:31, that was an option, go 4th.
4th.
4th, I can't think.
4th doesn't work for you?
The 10th, I'm only available until 6:00, so, either one's fine.
Monday, the 4th?
Thursday?
I'm looking at December.
Thursday?
Thursday, January 4th at 5:30. Carly will send an invite out on that. And one other thing that we've been working to schedule for quite a while is a data workshop. We reached out with some possible dates the first two weeks in January. There was not a date out of those listed that worked for all the board members, so another date that I'm going to throw out to folks, we didn't reach out on any Mondays. Monday evenings are our typical board meetings. We didn't reach out on any Mondays in January because New Year's Day is January 1st, is a Monday, and then the following Monday is a regular board meeting, but the Monday after that, Monday, January 15th, is Martin Luther King Day, we don't have students that day, but it is a workday for our administrators, and we would be available, our admin team would be available that evening if it works for all the board members. Are people able to check right now on Monday, January 15th?
I can make that work.
That's not really gonna...
That's like in a school wall that's somebody trying to...
That is the, that's the week of the school board convention. That makes a difference.
That'd be at 6:30, I can't make it till 6:30 though.
6:30 work?
I can do that, I'm good.
Jen and Ted, let's do it.
Best we got.
15th at 6:30 PM here in the PDC. And that was it for board and committees.
Awesome. And I have exhausted my agenda. I move your turn. Second. Rick and Dave, questions?
Of course not.
All in favor?
Aye. Questions? Questions?